This time we'll call the Tuesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. We have Larry McDevitt and myself here in the office and Mike, who was at the sad basketball game last night. But congratulations to the Bellevue comments. They really played a good game and just came up one basket short. Especially when you're playing somebody that's twenty-four and all. Top ranked and Bellevue really gave them a run for their money. So congratulations to the young men. First item on our agenda this, oh, we have Lisa and Bjorn and Luanne and our first appointment this morning is David Dreyer.
Good morning, morning, David.
First item on the agenda, we have two entrance permits, but we're going to table one as it hasn't been field reviewed yet. And that would be the permit for Victor and Jean Theer. And so our first permit is for A.J. Spiegel and Bellevue Township looking for a Class D field entrance. Section eleven on the south side of Seabirding Ridge Road. And we recommend approval of that permit.
So moved.
Second, from a motion in a second to approve the field entrance permit for A.J. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
You need to have a motion and a table, the second one.
Yeah, I'd move to table the permit for Victor and Jean Tier.
I'd say that. A second, uh, motion and a second to table Victor and Jean Thiers' uh, application until next week.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Okay, the big item on the agenda, we had a public hearing for the five-year road plan for secondary roads. We need to submit the plan to the state by April. So we need a approval of the board for that. The one thing that has changed since the presentation that last week was that S. Bridge number SF thirty-six or three hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue. And Bridge number Iowa thirty-three twenty on seventeenth Avenue were swapped. So the one bridge was moved up to twenty-four. Twenty-four, I gotta change the date on that table. And the other one was dropped down to twenty-six. And that was based on uh, bridge inspection that had just come in.
Okay, so, so the, the SF's thirty-six oh-three will be in twenty-six?
No, I swapped them in the table. I forgot to change the, the year on there.
I'll say that go with twenty-four?
Yes.
And the other one will be twenty-six?
Yes, Iowa thirty-three twenty will be twenty-six. I just copied the lines and switched them and, and changed the year. I'm a.
Most of your five-year open.
We have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve the five-year road plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Somewhere here, I read for the Walmart Bridge Main Street, that's for twenty-twenty-three.
It'll start this year.
Yeah.
This is twenty-two, right? It's twenty-three on the time. Yeah, that I was thinking it was.
Yeah. Okay.
I will break that to know if that was officially, it looked made it sound like it was.
No, it says twenty-two, it's starting in June. Okay, uh, possible action and consideration. This is the additional work that we had been discussed with local funds. And one of the projects that we wanted to tackle was the paving of Thirty-Fifth Street. From Iowa sixty-two. Up to the end of the pavement, total length of one point oh-eight miles. We solicited bids from three companies, River City Paving, Kleesner Construction, and the Nats. River City Paving was the low bidder at a hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents. The next lowest bid was two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. A difference of seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. We originally budgeted two hundred and ten thousand dollars, so it's under budget. And as we narrowed in on constructing the project, the engineer's estimate was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So we're close to the River City paving numbers. It'll be twenty-six wide, twenty-six feet wide, all pavement markings. And so we recommend approval of that so we can do that this year.
I would make a motion to approve the low bid from River City Paving.
One second.
A motion and a second to approve River City, River, River City Paving. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Part of that road is starting to cave off on one side. How do you fix that? Make it wider or just building up again?
It's gonna be twenty-six feet wide. I don't know exactly if that includes any widening. Probably just build it up statewide gems.
You've talked about. Let you show it around. There's no show.
The other uh, project that uh, we want to have approved is some uh, pavement patching. So this includes patching on Cage Road, Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue, the Hurstville Road, Bridge Approaches. Where we have a bump where you hit the end of the bridge. Uh, there's some patching on Iron Bridge. Doing some patching in Andrew on Hundred and Fiftieth Street. And on Two Thirty-Third Avenue at Highway sixty-four, paving a hundred and fifty feet of that off of sixty-four. Which is what we typically do when we take a gravel road to, to pavement, to degrade there. So steep that it's a perpetual maintenance problem. Also have the grader going out, sticking its nose out into the road as it has to maintain that. So getting that piece will be a, a good thing to do. The little bit is Kleesner Construction. We solicited bids from River City Paving, Kleesner, Minats, and Seven Hills Paving. Kleesner Construction was a little bit at sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty cents. The next lowest bid was River City Paving at sixty-seven thousand, twelve dollars and ninety-two cents. Budgeted eighty-five thousand dollars for the paving, so we're, we're good there. So we recommend awarding to Kleesner Construction.
The motion to approve.
I would second.
Motion in a second to approve the, the bid to Kleesner's construction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David, I have a question. I believe last year we approved some patching on west of sixty-one on the Bellevue Cascade. Is that correct? And that's gonna be completed before fiscal year?
It should, yes.
Okay.
So it's just getting those, the contractor again. I can check with Mike when they, they say they're gonna be back.
Thank you.
Bet. Some years ago, we looked after that accident on Confish Hollow Road, where the tractor went off, that might be before your time.
It was.
Where that happened, it comes down, down the hill, kind of winds around, it makes a sharp turn around, this bluff is right there. And then she come around the corner, it literally drops off by twenty feet before it starts going down at a really steep angle. That's where the tractor and the wagon with some people on it went off.
Was this by bar, bar stormers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know Roger went out. I think I went out with him, maybe Clark. Did that far along ago?
We have.
They looked at taking some of that bluff off and just moving it over to the other side. The other problem with what's going up and down, well, they changed the tractor, using a bus now, but there's still hundreds of people that walk the road along the traffic, so it would, it's just a safety issue. I think it'd be a big.
I think they, you know, I've seen the, the bluff and they showed it to me. And certainly you can, you know, spend money and, and try to, to cut that down. I don't know if moving it onto the trees on the other side is.
Is the answer is just getting it out of there. Yeah, it probably doesn't need to go any further than the other way.
That's all. Just worry about, you know, what do we do to the trees there? We'd have to, to get a cost estimate and see what that, that does.
I know they're starting to book shows for this year.
Okay. And then the last thing on the agenda, our mechanic is retiring. Started in January third, twenty-twelve, works through McCoke, a shop, like Babcock, he's, uh, given his last day. So we want to have a motion to accept his retirement and authorize posting internally and externally for filling his position.
Don't move.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize internal and external posting for a mechanic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
How many years does Mike have in? David?
About ten.
And he came in twelve. Thank you, David. Are there any citizens that wish to address the board? Hearing, we're seeing none. We'll move on to Alyssa Smith.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
This morning, to approve the minutes of the March first, twenty-twenty-two board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to approve.
I would second.
A motion and a second to approve the publication of the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve a handwritten warrant to the State of Iowa, the Division of Labor, Division of Labor for the elevator permit for three hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Larry, did you make a motion?
Yeah, yes.
I would second.
And is the elevator all done and?
No, okay. We're in the process of the elevator was re-inspected in October of twenty-twenty-one and the work hasn't been completed yet, so that's why the state shut us down. And we're having some issues with the repair company. So we don't know when the elevator will be opened back up.
Okay.
So we're paying for another inspection and we haven't done any work?
Correct.
It doesn't make any sense.
Uh, what does that do for us, Lisa, for ADA compliant?
Well, we're not. I mean, I, we're trying, we've been trying, Marty's been trying to talk to the repair company. It's our understanding there potentially could be some supply issues for parts. Um, I do not, I do not know a hundred percent if Marty has contacted the state for us to get an extension. Um, we were given a notice to shut it down for ten days back in October. And when that didn't happen, that's why they walked in last Monday and shut it down. So um, trying to visit with the company to get this on, you know, the fast track to get it repaired so we can get using it again. And as of, well, that was as of yesterday, um, it's still shut down and we still have questions about the supply of the parts to fix it. And it's still about, I mean, it works. Don't take, I mean, it works. It's just that it opens or closes too fast, I think it is.
Is, is that the understanding that I heard that it like the door closes too?
Yeah.
Fast?
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with the elevator, except it's missing this um, electronic eye for five thousand dollars.
That lets people in without closing on them.
Yeah, but it would close as soon as it hit something, it would close. But it's missing the electronic eye is what I understand. I, I'm not a hundred percent on this. So anyways, we came to re-inspect, found out that it wasn't fixed, so that's why they shut us down.
Has anybody checked for a broken wire?
Well, we've talked about it with Marty for a long time.
Yes. And I can't answer that, Larry. I don't know.
I guess in your conversation, would there be a chance that, you know, even like security could accompany someone to man the door per se?
Um, up until this point, I've let Marty be in charge of this process, but I think I need to make a call out to the state to see if they will allow us an extension. And if possibly, because we have a supply issue for parts, if they would allow us to, to continue operating. Um, I think I'll have to call out to the Division of Labor to talk to someone to see if we can get that accomplished. I had too busy.
Yeah, that would probably be better um, done by you than Marty, I would think. But uh, where are we, where are we at with the motion here?
Um, I, I have it down that, that Larry made the motion, you seconded it, and we haven't voted yet.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of paying the, the fee for the elevator? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried.
I also need a motion to accept, place on file and authorize the chair signature and the county recorders report a fees collected for the month of February twenty-twenty-two in the amount of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents.
Move to approve.
I guess.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And next on my agenda is the liquor licenses. I need a motion to approve the renewal of a Class E liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Obies at thirty-six ten, one hundred and seventy-third Avenue with Coqueta. Effective March first, twenty-twenty-two through February twenty-twenty-eight, February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve the Class C liquor license and outdoor sales for um, Obies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve the renewal of a Class E liquor license, a Class C beer permit, a Class B native wine permit with Sunday sales to SNK Gas and Food LLC at eighteen eight twenty Bellevue Cascade Roads Winkle. Effective April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two to April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And just as a point of noting, when I present these liquor licenses to you, they're already approved by the state. So the state, all of that is, it's done through the state and you are the final approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the like licenses for SNK Food LLC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion.
That is actually, I'm sorry, that's actually more than one permit.
Yeah.
I mean, so wine on a severe one and that's a liquor one.
Yes, yes, they apply for individual licenses. Yes, correct. And then, as we're dealing with my next, our resolutions, I'm gonna present resolution number eight seventy-three. Because we've determined that this will be the Together We Build Building, as we all know it as, that this will be a county building and um, so we now need to follow Iowa law when it comes to this. So today I need a motion to approve resolution number eight seventy-three dash zero three dash zero eight dash twenty-twenty-two. Ordering the construction of the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension, the four-H Outreach Center, and fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking of bids therefore. Um, I think the bids are gonna be opened up. Is it like March twenty-fourth, I think is the date? Yeah, anyway, we'll have to schedule a, we'll have to schedule a special meeting for that also.
I would, uh, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the last resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve resolution number eight seventy-four dash zero three dash zero eight dash twenty-twenty-two. To approve the State of Iowa Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus. It is a duplication of benefits, policies, and procedures.
Um, is that, is that dealing with the Leisure Lake Project or no?
Yes.
No?
Yes, yes.
I would uh, make a motion to approve.
One second.
With a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
My third resolution for today is in a, I need a result, I need a motion to approve resolution number eight seventy-five dash zero three dash zero eight dash twenty-twenty-two. For an operating transfer moving three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-six cents from the Capital Projects Fund, the thirty-three thousand fund, to the General Basic Fund, oh, one thousand, effective March eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And as I've said before, this is because we move money around and this is why I need this resolution today.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just a little, oh, go ahead. Did you vote? Everybody voted?
Yeah, okay, we all said aye.
So just as a, as a background, um, I sent, as I've said before, I've sent everything for our redistricting. Um, our redistricting of your supervisor districts, I sent that to the State of Iowa on December thirtieth. The post office delivered it on January tenth. And late Friday afternoon, March fourth, the State of Iowa notified me that our redistricting has been reviewed by the Secretary of State's Office. And that they have approved our, our ordinance pending. What they didn't like is I used township lines. I thought that was the clean way. I use township lines to divide districts. Part of the, this temporary redistricting committee that met in the basement, we had public hearings and it was their decision to use, um, because we thought it was easy. We use township lines to divide these districts. Well, the State of Iowa, the Secretary of State's Office disagreed with that. And where they disagreed was in the city of Spregville. I, you know, the committee used the township line to divide the district. The Secretary of State's Office says that we unnecessarily um, split the town of Spregville and that they've adjusted our boundaries to include Spregville into District One. So for that, because this is an ordinance, um, it's of the opinion of County Attorney Sarah Davenport that we also now, because it's an ordinance, we need to have a public hearing. And then we'll have to pass another ordinance and publish.
For fourteen, for fourteen people.
Fourteen people, right.
That what it adds to District One, is that correct or?
That's correct. It adds fourteen to your district.
Yes.
And we're still in the parameters of?
Yeah, it doesn't, because we were, we were at zero. We had done such a good job. We were up thirty and then down thirty, so it zeroed out, but they didn't like our decision when it comes to the town of Spregville. So with that being in mind, we, I now am requesting to set, um, set the date of March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two at ten ten AM for a public hearing on proposed ordinance three oh-one to adjust the boundaries of the supervisor directed, director districts in Jackson County as approved by the Secretary of State.
What's the approximate cost of this?
Um.
We'll publishing everything that goes with it.
It'll be a couple of hundred easily. Uh, what do you think?
You, easily.
Yeah, it'll be a couple of hundred. So to publish the offering newspapers. Yeah, and because I, well, I prefer to have a colored, um, I wanted to have a colored map so people, but I, I looked at one paper and it did not get colored, but they had, you know, distinguished it some other way. So anyway, yeah, it's gonna cost us, because, you know, in all three newspapers, it, there's a cost of that. So we have to hold a public hearing. We'll have to um, republish everything and then send everything back to the state for their approval.
So the state will reimburse us for that, yeah?
You're right.
Oh, you know it.
That, that wasn't, I didn't get that confirmation from my email to them.
We'll send them an invoice though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just need a motion today to approve a public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a second to set the public hearing for March twenty-second at ten ten AM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Crazy.
It is crazy. And I know that Heidi is on this morning, so my last item that I have right now is that I would like to have a motion to approve and authorize Auditor Smith to sign a full disclosure dissemination agent agreement between Jackson County and Northland Securities, Inc. So Heidi, I will let you explain to the board what this means.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Good morning.
Good morning. Alright, so uh, we have a full disclosure dissemination agent agreement. Um, what this agreement does is when the county uh, went into these bonds that are closing next week, um, in those bonds, it is a requirement from the SEC that you keep investors updated on an annual basis. Um, and there's a rule that the SEC came out with called fifteen C two dash twelve. Um, that says that you will disseminate uh, information annually to the MSRB on updates to the county. Um, Northland has um, a full-time continuing disclosure specialist who does this work. Um, the things that are disseminated, disseminated annually um, are the county's audit. And then also, if you remember, when we approved the offering document with the financial statistics and um, valuation updates, it's about a ten-page document that um, we would uh, disseminate e- um, annually uh, by June thirtieth um, each year. Uh, the fee associated with it, um, our standard fee is a, um, a thousand dollars per year plus two hundred and fifty dollars per issue. Um, the county only has one issue, so the uh, fee annually is one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
And can you tell me how many reports we are completing here? Is this a, a, a normal procedure, like a third party for auditing purposes? Is that what I'm kinda putting together?
So, um, this rule requires that issuers keep investors updated through the SEC. Um, this is a service that Northland provides for our issuers. Um, probably ninety-five percent of our uh, customers uh, have us take care of these types of postings and requirements to the website um, for our issuers. Um, uh, you know, just uh, the few that don't, um, are, are larger clients that have ex, ex, you know, extensive staffs to take the time to make sure that this is posted appropriately in, in, in the deadlines.
So it's a hidden cost. Yeah.
I, here's what I can tell you, is that even in Heidi, you'll, you'll agree with me. We did have to have a local um, enforcement officer, correct? Because we did pass that resolution.
Yes.
Okay, so we passed that, but I will tell you in many of my conversations that I've had with bond counsel. Um, this was a little bit overwhelming about making sure that we've dotted all of our uh, Ts and crossed our Is. And making sure that we do it at a very timely manner because the penalties, I don't think we'd wanna deal with that either. And, and you know what? We deal with Emma and, and there's all different kinds of SEC and Emma, and you talked about the MR. I mean, there's there's just all different kinds of places that we need to make sure that we, because it is a tax-exempt bond. Um, we need to let our investors know what we're doing and how our financial position is. So getting our audit done in a timely manner is also critical at this point. They're trying to hammer out our audit right now so we can get done, so we can get it to everybody that needs to look at it. So um, like I said, they're more of a professional and they know the dates that we need to follow. And I guess I support this idea. I know that there is a cost to the county, but to keep us in line, um, I guess that's the way that I would put it.
We certainly need to meet our deadlines and, and do our procedures as we've just seen that now we have to publish again and that's gonna cost us X amount of dollars. So uh, it could be a cost savings to us, not an expense, basically.
Correct.
I would, I would move to approve uh, this disclosure, some dissemination agent agreement. Here it is.
One second.
A motion and a second. And obviously, it's in our best interest to do it, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And just for myself personally, thank you. Because it, it is important that we, that we do this correctly and, and uh, we did work very closely with Heidi, so thank you for that. We did work very closely with Heidi, so thank you for that.
So Heidi, I'm in your neighborhood, you know, I'm not too far away if you're all in Waukees, so I'm a couple miles away from there.
I'm not far at all.
No, but, uh, I was telling these guys here, uh, we were within probably eight miles of that tornado the other night and didn't realize it, you know?
Yeah, it, it got a little dicey, but fortunately it was a little bit south of the Waukees area. Um, it was quite the storm that way, so. Well.
Are we gonna see you at ISAC this week?
Yes, I will be at ISAC later this week, so. I should ha- I should have some pens and fun things.
We'll stop early.
Yeah, we'll get there early while you still have carbols. Thanks Heidi.
Alright, thank you very much. Talks, we'll talk soon.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yep, bye-bye.
And that's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you.
And I'll just have you wait and we'll do, um, David and Kelly first, if that's okay?
Sure.
Being joined by Dave Hayer and Kelly Brown. Good morning, lady and gentlemen.
So where are you, Mike?
He's out in Des Moines.
In Des Moines?
Bellevue played last night and.
Oh, that's right, yes, lost our one.
My one point in overtime.
Wow, what a great thing against the number one seed.
Yeah.
Well, I'm fortunate to have the, our daughter living out here that I don't see very often, so I get to come and see the grandkids and, and I spend a couple days. I sent my wife home with some friends yesterday and a couple of my grandchildren, so she's on her own with a couple of grandchildren, like my daughter's on vacation, so. I'm kinda taking a break here too, I guess, so.
So don't party too much while she's gone.
Oh.
Good morning.
I'll, I'll see you guys, I'll see you guys later today, so, yeah.
Well, if you recall that our last quarterly update, we talked about the manufacturing four point O grants and then, um. That small cities could, or I'm sorry, small companies under seventy-five employees could. Apply for up to seventy-five thousand dollars and the, the larger companies could apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars. So as it turns out, PMW was awarded seventy-five thousand dollars. And we were super excited to see that Plastics Unlimited had applied for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And they were awarded four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that was just a great thing for them, that'll make a big difference.
Certainly.
We were all super excited. So his camera's up there, right?
Yeah.
So when we're looking this way, we really, yeah, okay.
Yes, he's, he's, he's looking over your shoulders.
So anyway, that was his great, great news. And then speaking of other grants, um, I wanted to thank you for your support of Leisure Lake. I actually had started that grant with, when I was still at ECIA. And so I had followed his progress through and it's exciting that they were able to work through all the details of that. And so you were comfortable with being the administrative, as required, you know, for that grant to be able to, um. Be submitted and, you know, and I think you have another, one more additional form that you get to. Approved yet today, and then that would be ready to go. And so that's exciting. And also, just so you know, um, Preston is applying for a CBVGCV grant for public facilities. That Makokona YMCA had applied for a CBVGCV public facilities grant. And as you know, we're working through the. Um, or may not know, but we're working through a grant for the, um, Innovate One Twenty, that's Robert Abbott. And then we're also working for another, we're working through another grant with Robert Abbott for one thirty-eight South Main. And that will actually be for housing conversion, because he wants to put apartments, two apartments in the upper story of that building. So it's good things that are happening for downtown and good things that are happening for the county. And then, um, just to let you know, we did try to work through something with Sevula. Um, we had three people that we had contacted. One that we had tried to work through either the housing version, housing conversion grant or the CBVGCV grant. Um, that owner just chose to do the work himself and didn't wanna go through all the federal regulations, which can be understandable. Cause they can be very intimidating at times and, um, but, so we did try to work through that and we also tried to work through something with Bellevue. And we weren't able to get that done either. I mean, and, and again, those were just circumstances where it just wasn't ideal for the owners of those buildings. But, um, and it, and we also reached out to the rest of the communities, just to say, hey, these things are available. If there's anything that we can do, because you wanna make sure that if there's an opportunity that, you know, for sure. They take it if we can make it work, right? So, um, and another exciting, well, it's not exciting, we're exciting, we're, we're excited, we're hopeful, but. Uh, we did go through the great places, re-designation, um, submittal for the city of Makokona. And that was quite the extensive process. And for me, it's, it's learning about, being able to go through the process and learning about all of. The great things that have happened over the last ten years, five years, and so much of the county that, um. It's very reassuring and, you know, we keep kidding Dave that he really can't retire and he keeps telling us that he is, but, you know. He's spent the energy, as you know, behind all of this. So, but anyway, so that application was submitted February twenty-fourth. Um, we did meet a couple of times with the grant writer from ECIA who was working on it. And then also with John Berth with, um, Iowa Ethno Development Authority. On making sure that we could get any sort of wisdom from him and advice on how to better our chances of being able to receive that re-designation. So, you know, we're hopeful. We think that, or we're very pleased with the progress that's been made. We feel like it has met the goals. Of the first round and that, um. We should.
So when will you find out about the second round?
Well, the anticipation is that sometime in the next month, they will be setting up a site visit, because it doesn't.
Sure.
You know, it's not just the paper submittal, they wanna come out and.
Oh, sure they do.
See the community and we'll have a two-hour period of time to do our dog and pony show, um, and sell.
That's a strategy.
We'll talk, you drink, yeah.
And the more you drink.
Yeah. It'll seem like the more we're talking, but, but. So, so we're hoping to, to get that invite here soon and I, um, then we'll have to put that whole thing together. Again, it's all about partnerships, collaboration, which I think we can certainly tell a story about that. The difference between the application this time versus when we did it six years ago, well, a couple differences. One is that it's gonna be a ten-year designation, so that, that would be great if we get it. And the other is, it's more focused on arts, culture, history than the last time, uh, they were. Kind of really playing it loose the last time around, when, when we initially got designated. And, uh, they were between directors and so, you know, it was, there wasn't a whole lot of organization. Now, of course, they've, um, tightened up some of the rules and regulations and their focus, uh, as the Department of Cultural Affairs. To be more about arts, culture and history, so. But, but again, I think we have a great story to tell, uh, and, and we have some, uh, really active organizations involved in the arts and cultural kinds of things. And certainly in historic rehabilitation, uh, kind of thing, so. Uh, we'll kinda wait and see on that. So, kinda building on what, like Kelly has already talked about, you know, we've talked about catalyst grants in the past and, and the county's been, uh. Very successful. We've gotten six catalyst grants, so those are a hundred thousand dollar grants to help with six different building projects. In, in the county. Three of those are completed, um, and three of them are still in process. So the ones that we're working on, trying to complete will, are two in Sevula. One is the Ackerman, what used to be the Ackerman Grocery Store and renovation of apartments on the upper stair story and, uh, commercial space on the lower level. We actually had a site visit, uh, just a couple of weeks ago from the new, um, person who's kind of heading this program. Just kinda get a look at it and kinda get a sense of where we're going. We are gonna be asking for a, an extension on that one, because it was supposed to be completed by June of this year. And, and there's just no way with all the extra things that they found out they had to do, including replacing the road. As well as, um, just contractors and supplies and those kinds of things, so.
Just getting the material is a big deal.
Absolutely, right. But, but they were, the, the gentleman who came up in the state certainly totally understood all that. And so we're going through that, those steps to make that. Amendment to, to timeline there. The other two projects, uh, one, one, the other one in Sevula is the construction of a new, uh, restaurant down in the Marina. And they are working still on their design plan, so none, no construction has actually started. However, the other part of that project was removal of the, what they call the fish shed. Um, and that has been removed, so that part's done. Just the new construction hasn't quite started yet. And then in Preston, we're working with them on the, um, Preston Times Building, or what used to be the Preston Times Building is not occupiable at this point. So, um, we have, uh, just gotten estimates or not seen a bid on that work last week. And so we're kind of working through that whole thing with the, the owner on that project, so. The, the next thing I wanted to talk a little bit about was, uh, kind of housing throughout the county. And, uh, as you all know, housing is a critical element of, um, trying to recruit workforce. But also to keep people living here. And when we take a look at our population base, um, if we wanna maintain or grow our population in Jackson County. We need to have housing options. So I think some really good things have been happening, particularly in the last, uh, year or so. You know, and, and some of this has been in planning for a while, but we're seeing some results now in Makokona. And, and I wanna thank the board too for, for their cooperation and working with some of the cities in trying to make some of these developments happen. Cause I know in a couple of them, uh, they needed to use a fifteen-year TIP, which requires the board to, uh, approve or sign off. And appreciate your support in that. So in Kokona, they just approved a twenty-eight lot subdivision and a seven lot subdivision. Those are the first two new subdivisions in the eight and a half years I've been with, uh, Jackson County Economic Alliance. So that, that's huge for, for them. And I think it's a, a, a beginning of, of a new era or, or chapter here. Um, so, so we'll see some of the work actually being done on those subdivisions as weather permits here. Preston, um, I know some of you were present for their ribbon cutting last fall. They opened up their new subdivision, they Harvest View subdivision. Uh, they have twenty-six new lots and I think, uh, according to the city administrator, they have a couple that are, uh, people are nibbling on or, or looking, have, have interest in. So, uh, it'll be fun to see some of the construction starting in, in that development. And in Bellevue, they had a sixteen lot, a subdivision, which they did not use tax increment on, um. The Jackson subdivision and, um, that, uh, you know, the, the sweet part with their project is that all of those lots. Were sold before they awarded a bid for, um, the public infrastructure. So, yeah, it is, uh, amazing and we're not gonna find that everywhere, but it, it did work for them. But, but the challenge then is that now there are still no lots available for sale, other than the ones that are owned by these contractors or developers. Who I'm sure are gonna be putting up houses in the next year or two, but, um, it, so that'll help in, in some regard. But as they're looking to the future, they have acquired that fifty-three acre site south of town. And so we had a joint meeting with the council and the utility board and their economic development group beta and our office, kinda talked about, okay. How do we move forward on this? You know, it, the, the challenge for them right now is extending water and sewer to that site. So it's about a two million dollar estimated cost and, um, you know, the, the council is concerned about. Investing two million dollars and not having any kind of commitments at, at this point. But what I shared with them is that I had a, a developer who was serious about putting in a senior housing project. Uh, independent living, uh, senior housing in Bellevue. But we had no land, you know, and, uh, we thought we had a parcel of ground that was gonna work and then at the end it fell through. And so, uh, uh, he's now looking at a project in Preston, uh, cause I had his ear and I said, okay, well. Yeah, so we don't have a place in Bellevue, but how about another Jackson County community? So we are still having conversations, discussion. In fact, I just had one yesterday with him as a follow-up and. I hope to have at least a letter of interest from him, uh, sometime yet this week, that we can take to their city council for discussion and consideration. On, not in their new subdivision, but they acquired another parcel of ground that they didn't really have plans for at this point, but it would be on that site, so. So we're working on lots of different, on housing on lots of different levels. Uh, the hospital, um. Rerealization of that site, we're still trying to kinda figure that out, but the closing occurred on Friday. So the, um, the new, uh, company is an LLC, Grove Street Realty Holdings. Formed in Delaware, which really tells us nothing at this point, but.
Really?
Uh, but we, I, I did ask the hospital just this morning if we could have the contact for the attorney that they've been dealing with. And we didn't wanna mess anything up while they were going through the closing, but we'd like to at least reach out directly to the. Investor or investors, um, and offer our assistance to help them take a look at the opportunities or options for that, reuse of that site. Workforce is something that you hear a lot about and, and, you know, we continue to take a look at how we can assist our, our local companies and businesses in that. We have, um, just established your set of, of career slash hiring fair for April twenty-eighth. At the fairgrounds here, so hopefully the emails to the local industries will be live yet today or tomorrow for sure. Um, to invite them to participate in that. Um, and we're, we're working in cooperation with the Chamber and the Community College and, um. Uh, I will workforce development to try to pull this all together, but it's a little challenging in our office. Cause in the past few years, Stephanie has kind of really led the charge and that, we just kinda let her handle it. But, uh, obviously she's no longer here with us, but she has, uh, agreed to kind of give us some advice and assistance along, along the way here. And so we will tap into her knowledge to help put this together and let it run as smoothly as possible. We're also working with Cirrus on, uh, and I know that many of you were involved in the surveying of, of, of businesses and industries. In the program called I Win and their, uh, eighty-page report was shared with us, their graph was shared with us right around Christmas time. And that's, we're still having phone conversations with them to talk about exactly how do we share this information with businesses and industries. We've given the full report to a couple of, of our local industries who are desperately looking for additional help. But I don't expect every industry is gonna wanna read eighty pages of a report, so we're trying to figure out how to get them. To read the parts that are pertinent to, to, to them. So we're, we're still working through some of that. As you're aware, um, particularly Jackson, he serves on our board, but we've had a contract to do some, uh, coaching for the last five years. That contract for Hometown Pride ends at, uh, the end of this fiscal year, June. And, um, to a, to a large degree, that's taken up a huge chunk of my time, but is also paid. Much of my salary also for the last five years. And it's kind of a follow-up to the whole Parks to People Initiative. The communities involved from Jones, Jackson and Beaufort Counties did want to dissolve that relationship, that partnership. At the same time, we were saying, we can't continue to provide that kind of assistance and service from our office without some. Reinvestment from everybody along the way. And so we, we did have a, a contract, uh, again, the, the state contract was with ECIA. Our contract was, uh, some, some contract with ECIA to provide coaching services in Jackson and Jones Counties. Um, that expires, uh, as I said, at the end of June, uh, some of the communities like Makokona and Bellevue have kind of figured out their transition plan. And how they plan to move forward, uh, to carry on some of what we're doing, but it won't necessarily be under Hometown Pride. Um, and, uh, Preston and Sevula have expressed an interest to continue on and ECIA is working with them. And, uh, to try to find a way to continue to serve them with a coach. Um, at Bellevue and Makokona will probably be doing it without a coach. And, and, and that was really the kind of intent of this program is that with five years of coaching, that hopefully they can kind of get off and be on their own. And still move forward, but they would know how to, how to do some of these things. So all that's still evolving. We have a few kind of months to kind of wrap it up in, um, some of these communities. And we're doing the same kinds of things in Jones County and, and Beaufort County cities really were mostly handled by ECIA. I was only called in periodically to assist them, so we're not heavily involved there. Um, Innovate One Twenty, uh, Kelly's already shared, uh, with you that we're working with, um, the. With, uh, Robert Abbott, uh, on a grant application that we were hoping is gonna. with uh Robert Abbott on a grant application that we were hoping is gonna get submitted yet this week for some major renovations uh on the inside of that building. Uh, the cost estimates is for the some of the interior, basically the lobby area. Uh, and some of what he's hoping to do is a seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, we're asking for a five hundred thousand dollar grant to assist with that. Uh, and again, Robert's goal is to make this facility not only a huge resource for local businesses and an entre- a site for entrepreneurs, also a a site to partner with a community college and training kinds of things, and some of it that he's doing on his own, as he is right now with some high school students through the Startup One Twenty Program, but um he the other, his other goal there with this building is to make it the kind of place where you kind of walk into the building and you're just awed by the 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 physical appearance of of the building and the functionality that he's hoping to make it kind of a tech center for a Coke to primarily, but uh Jackson County overall, so we continue to work with with him on on that. Think um Jack's at least aware, but the Lieutenant Governor was i- in in Jackson County a few weeks ago. We were contacted by his office saying, hey, the Lieutenant Governor would like to stop someplace in Jackson County where might we uh you know, or might be a good spot for him to kind of land. So we uh put together kind of a little itinerary of seven different projects he could visit, because he wanted to see something where some state money was maybe involved. And uh he chose to go to Plastics Limited, which ended up being a a great opportunity for him to see some of the expansion that that's going on there, and I don't know if you're all aware, but they physically expanded their building a couple of years ago. And now they are going to be going through another expansion this year, and we're working with the city on 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 that whole uh thing, but adding another thirty thousand square feet because uh their business has grown so rapidly recently, and and much of it is due to a contract, a new a new contract that they have with John Deere. And and this is just to get and kind of give you a sense of how this works. This is a project that they've been working on, research and development prototypes and trial error kind of thing for a five year period of time before they got to a product where John, you're saying, yeah, this is it. Let's go ahead, and of course, when they say that, then they mean like yesterday. Um, and so they're scrambling to 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 do that, and uh Plastics is also scrambling to find enough employees to to make this happen. They're going to a third shift, and um you know, they a year ago had seventy five employees, and in a couple of months, they expect to be at close to a hundred and fifty employees, just to kind of give you a sense of how dramatically this is impacting what what they're doing and and their abilities. So the grant that Kelly talked about earlier um for helping with some upgrades of their equipment is uh gonna be a a great assistance, and I know they're very appreciative. One last thing that I just wanna share uh before I turn it back to Kelly is that how Jackson County projects were recognized by the Thousand Friends of Iowa at the end of January for some renovation projects that uh have been completed, and all three of those were catalyst projects. So it was the Button Factory in Bellevue, and they were re- awarded the Best Development Award for Renovated Commercial Space. Um, the one ten South Main or the McCopey Brewing um building in in the Cocola was um a best mixed use, and Mitchell Masquerie was the best renovated residential project. Uh, and it's it's a special award in in any regard, but when you think that they gave eight awards out statewide this year, three of those were in Jackson County, I think we can uh be pretty proud of of what we're we're doing, particularly as it relates to uh historic uh reuse of buildings, so.
Well, speaking of appreciation, um and Jack, I need to get with you yet this week, hopefully that we can finalize a date for the appreciation event slash Dave's retirement that he's protesting about, is gonna happen regardless uh date for.
I'm not protesting retirement.
Just wanted to qualify that. He's protesting that he's he keeps saying, I wish that last part would just go away. As I said, I can't, that needs to be a part of as we're appreciating that we're appreciating everyone who's made a difference, and it's been a been part of the partnership for the last eight and a half years. So um anyway, that's still on, we're hoping now that looks great to be able to be in person. So um offshore graciously accepted our request to delay it and said they would be happy to host, so we'll work through those details. Um, just kind of backtracking a little bit for your, I think everyone, sorry, you're over here. Everyone's aware of or is involved in some of the projects with Iowa students with the IISC um institute, and currently they have, I think, thirteen different projects going on, and just last Wednesday, we had seven students from the University of Iowa come over, and they toured Preston, Sebula and Bellevue. And each each one of the cities had given us kind of a map and of the highlights of things they wanted them to see so that they could get an idea of the atmosphere and the culture and their their task at hand is to come up with a new you know, logo marketing uh for rebranding of the city. So in order to be able to just kind of deep dive into what each city was about, they came over to tour it, and actually, I think there's five different groups, five or six.
So there are five student groups.
Five student groups, and we'll be developing proposals for each one of the cities and then competing against each other, but which one ultimately get chosen to be the new brand for the city. So and again, there's uh twelve other projects going on, and um if if they turn out anything like the first half did, I've read through most of those reports, it's pretty impressive what they're able to come up with. So I hope to be able to continue those partnerships in the future and find ways to work through and use those resources.
And they're such wonderful young adults.
Yes.
You know, I've met with the ones from the Historical Society um on three different occasions, and they are just, it'd be great to have that much energy.
Well, it's nice to have somebody from the outside to take a look at things with us, because sometimes we don't see what's right in front of us, because because we see it every day, but and and their expertise, I mean, you know, the way this is set up, and and Kelly's talking about the number of projects, but we're we're looking at some that are involved with arts, some that are involved with history, some that are involved with engineering, you know, some of their planning, marketing. So a lot of different departments within the university that we're being able to tap into um as part of this, and just as an aside, I was asked to share this information next week when the Iowa City Managers Meet in Iowa City and as a part of a panel to talk about uh our experience in using this program with the University of Iowa, so it's um being noticed.
So I know the first time they came, there was eight plus the two professors, and then they had a tag along, um and she was an art major, and she just, I I bet, I bet she took two hundred pictures of the limestone kilns.
Oh, they're pretty cool.
All all over the place, and it was just so much fun to see how excited they were. And um just learning about it and and Bonnie was able to share with them a lot of the pictures from the eighteen seventies.
Oh, yeah.
So they got to see how it how it was, and um the one student in particular, he's very excited about trying to recreate some of that atmosphere out there and showed us where he wanted the building to be, and you know, I went up when they had um the presentation, and Larry was big in part of that with Camp Courageous.
Oh, yeah.
With their additional farm that somebody had left them the land and to try and make uh paths and stuff. The only, the only thing I told Bonnie and the Historical Society Board is when they make their final presentation, they also put a price tag on everything that might be maybe not attainable, but there are grants, so you know, we don't know, but sure, um they're really, I mean, I'm so excited to see what they come up with.
Well, the seven students that came last week and did the, I'll call the Jackson County Tour of Bellevue, Sebula and Preston. Um, they they were just odd with this, this is so beautiful around here, you know, I just uh overwhelmed with uh what a great area was, because for most of them, it was their first time to Jackson County, so.
Well, these were all civil civil engineer students, and I told them we had an opening next door. Because they're all seniors, I said, you know. If you're here and you really like it, we do have a job application at the courthouse for us, an assistant county engineer. So I don't know, I told that to David, so I don't know if one of them will like us well enough to try to stay around, but
We have some new apartments in the downtown.
Two wonderful opportunities, so.
I met with three of them yesterday, Tyler, Emily and Ruby, uh attorneys, and they're doing a plan for the watershed authority.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Had a nice discussion for about forty five minutes, and I'm gonna just outline what we're doing and how legally it falls into everything, so.
Right, and it's great opportunities for.
Oh, it is.
And between first semester and second semester, we are gonna end up with twenty four projects in Jackson County. So it's um well worth our fifty thousand dollar investment overall.
Well, I told Travis, I says, well, my grandson is a engineer student at at Iowa State, and his comment to me is, why the hell we go there? And I had no, I had no influence in the, that's where he goes to go. He's a junior.
Because Kelly does an eye roll from having two that just graduated from Iowa State, a third one who graduated from Iowa State, she might have graduated herself from Iowa State. But I'm getting used to the Iowa State bashing around here, but um but I can still support the Iowa students, I mean, I I can still support Iowa City, I think that both of them are great programs, and so just a couple other things, but follow up, um we are in the final stages of the interviews for the Assistant Director position, and we should have things finalized and hopefully have something in place by the end of the month. So, and then just lastly, just an FYI that I am attending the Heartland Training for Economic Development, and that's in Missouri the last week of April. And I'm really looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to what I'm gonna learn as well as networking with a lot of people that are going through the same thing I am, so that we can partner and work off each other and then, you know, use all of our available resources.
No, it's always important to have that meeting of the minds.
Right. So, and that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for your support to our organization, it's critical.
Did you have anything, Mike?
I do not, I appreciate the update, and uh um I guess on the hiring process, uh you there's uh good potential there, you feel, Kelly, that?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, I think it'll be it'll be good, that'll be great.
I'll just tell you, this week I probably will not be able to meet with you. I leave today to go to Des Moines, and I don't get back till Friday night.
Okay, I don't, just, well, I may just email just about a day, just like, just to make sure, and maybe I'll just check with the calendar to make sure that it's about, that's the only thing I needed.
Okay, that's fine. I will be there even if I have to.
Okay.
Do I just give this to?
There's the chat, the Incomis chat. Hey, I did have something else I I wanted to add is that, you know, we did get, we worked with the city of Sebula and some tip reporting and and the COVID with some budget things that there, those were additional resources that we were able to add just from the expertise that we're bringing to the office, and then also, you know, I don't think, I love Heidi still, Heidi's but um you know, I work with Heidi at the city of Wearset when I was with Wearset, and um you know, I follow the proceedings because I sort of know what's going on, so when I'm watching your meetings and you're thinking, okay, why is she doing that? I'm doing it to keep myself informed, but also I understand, you know, and then I know that um I think Mike reached out to me, right, with the CDHNA, and because he knew that I was aware of that in the past and said, hey, does this look good, and he had checked with you know, a couple of us to make sure that this was consistent, and 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 so that I appreciate that people understand that I have a lot of other things to offer. I'm still trying to fine tune and learn what I was hired to do, but you know, there's a lot that our office can bring to help the city and help to help the cities and help the county, and so again, thank you for all that you do, and thank you for the opportunity to help us help the the entire county, so.
Likewise.
Thank you.
I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate your input on that. I gotta reach out to the experts, you know.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I won't even touch it, Dave.
It's three thousand dollars.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Luanne Gohke, our administrative assistant. I think I've gone Jew.
Morning. All right, calendar for this week. Um, four o'clock this afternoon is the McCookin River WMAs Executive Meeting by Zoom, which we do it on the road, somewhere between here and Des Moines. Um, tomorrow, Wednesday, March ninth at ten AM is a zero to five in sixty minutes meeting um into it or by Zoom for Jack. Also at ten AM starts the Isaac's County Day at the State Capitol in Des Moines, and that's for all of you. At four o'clock Wednesday afternoon is the Isaac Supervisor's Executive Board Meeting, also in Des Moines, and that's for Larry. Thursday, March tenth at seven AM is a Bellevue Hometown Pride Meeting by Zoom for Mike. From nine AM to eight PM on Thursday is the Isaac Spring Conference in Des Moines for all of you. And at ten o'clock that morning, Jack will take you to the Iowa DHS Council Meeting by Zoom. Friday, March eleventh, from eight AM until five PM is the final day of the Isaac Spring Conference in Des Moines. On Sunday, March thirteenth at two AM, everybody remember to spring forward on your clocks. Monday, March fourteenth at seven AM is the Early Childhood Iowa Executive Board Meeting um into it or by Zoom for Jack. At one thirty PM is a Regional Governing Board Budget Work Session, also by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, March fifteenth at nine AM. Um, that evening at six o'clock is the Conservation Board Meeting in Hersville. And also at seven o'clock, the Board of Health Meeting in the Trinity Room downstairs. Business today, um I have a reappointment um for the Jackson County Week Commissioner. This is an annual appointment. Um, it will expire on February twenty 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 three. And um Jean Collins here has agreed to be reappointed in motion for that.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to repeat or re- reappoint Jean Collins here to the as Week Commissioner, all those in favor.
Uh, hi.
Motion carrying.
Uh, the other business I have is discussion possible action on the Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO Shared Liability Agreement.
Jack, yeah, we we had at our last meeting, we we made some alterations to um to our um agreement, and one of them is I have been the Clio since it started, and um things that I'm not gonna be around after this year, um they are going to make uh the appointment of the Clio and the Vice Clio, instead of Co, it's going to be Vice, and that will be the first meeting at the um first meeting after the calendar year. So it'll be in February that they'll appoint or elect uh uh someone to be the Clio. Um, uh, and we also this year, um we did it, and um it was helpful, um we sent letters to all of the counties in our eight county region and just basically said, okay, we had twelve meetings this month, this year, your representative came to so many of, whatever the number was that they were there, and one of them was only two. But we thought it was important, and they're gonna send those letters out earlier before the appointments are made in January to the boards that people are serving. You know, the one that irritates me the most is we have all of our meetings in Muscatine, and the Muscatine Representative this whole year has only been to three meetings. And his office is right there, and it'd be different, but he doesn't even respond, so he can be excused. You just, they're all unexcused applicants, so.
Would that be Nathan?
Oh, could be. Anyway, so we think it's important that we communicate with the counties and let them know that if somebody isn't participating, that maybe they should consider appointing someone else. And that's the.
Do the bylaws state that, Jack?
Well, our, our agreement says that after three consecutive unexcused applications, we will contact a letter from the Clio to that board asking them to appoint someone else.
Well, I will say this, I would just personally like to thank you for your dedication in that. I know that's, that's not easy either. That's travel. That's a lot of travel for you. And you're passionate about it and you dedicate a lot of time and effort to it. We appreciate that.
Thank you. And the other, the other thing is it's in accordance with the flexibility of the CEOs and the Iowa workforce. We are going to be having a more intimate role in selecting a fiscal officer. They're making applications right now. Our fiscal officer was the Southeast Iowa Community College. They took care of, or no, the Southeast Iowa, like ECIA, they're, they're planners. And we had some, we had some issues with them. And I guess the issues got to be more serious than they wanted to deal with. So they, they sent a letter saying at such and such a date, they were done. So we ran a request for proposals went out and now the CEOs will have an opportunity to meet with Miranda and Phyllis and come up with our recommendation to, for the fiscal officer. Because things were not getting things weren't getting done to the satisfaction of the CEOs. So I think it'll be a good thing. And that's basically the only things, the agreement shall be effective upon the approval of the Board of Supervisors of each of the member counties. The agreement shall continue until WIOA is rescinded or Mississippi Valley as a current, as currently designated is changed by the governor or upon the CEO's request to amend this agreement at any regularly scheduled meeting. So all we need to have you do is approve it and so that we can submit it back to Miranda so that we know that it's done.
I would make a motion to approve the Workforce CEO Shared Liability Agreement as presented.
I would second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor? Most of the guys are really, really, really committed, but we just have a couple of them that aren't as committed as the rest of them, but.
Well, my, my, my.
Last week, we talked about up and out, out, out bit. RTA. About the person that, I mean, never comes and is running for reelection. The people out there, I don't know that they're not getting their bang for their buck. So we discussed that with the other two Dubu supervisors that were there. So how are you going to get that story out?
Maybe other issues with him too, and it's just.
Believe even when he was chairman of RTA, a couple of times he just zoomed in. And the rest of the times, oh, well. That's neither here nor there. Is there any other business to come before the meeting today?
Well, I sure appreciate, yeah, the, the effort that we actually put forward too, you know, and I've, I've done that with the time on one board. And just an update with that a little bit, that is moving forward as planned. We had a special meeting with all law enforcement agencies about how many radios and the band type of radios that they're ordering. I think we've come to an agreement on that. They are having, actually, training starts next week, so hopefully everything proceeds as, as, as best we, we think it will. And then we can implement or work into the process with EMS and fire. So it's going to be a wonderful asset to Jackson County to be, have that update and it's just work in progress. As you know, Jack, it's been going on a lot of years, so. It's, it's, it's a good process to move forward with.
Yep, it is true.
You know, and that's, and that's one of them boards too, Jack. You know, you sit on them and all of a sudden you didn't have any. And I said from the get-go, if, if you're not interested or don't want to come, get somebody else to replace, you know, replace you. Just, we need to have input from everybody and it really works good when you have ten or twelve of the people there out of fourteen or whatever it is, you know, so. That's what, that's the purpose of them boards and commissions and whatnot, you know.
Well, you don't want the after, after attack when there's community doesn't maybe get what they wanted because nobody's been there to fight for them. And so it's important, important to be there in person to know what's going on. You can read the minutes, but that doesn't, I mean, it's, that doesn't tell the story. It tells the action you took, but it doesn't tell what led to the action.
Yeah, don't come, don't come complain after the, after the decision's made and you weren't there, you know.
Absolutely.
The, the date on this resolution is right, twenty twenty-two for the bridge. When I had on my emails at twenty-three.
The main street.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, anything else today?
Well, I tell you guys, the roads were a little slushy in the morning yesterday, but yesterday afternoon they were pretty good. So drive safe. Will do. That, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
I, Harry.
Meeting is adjourned.